Good evening. Welcome to the February 10, 2021 Board of Education meeting. I'd like to ask our superintendent to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one change in the meeting agenda. And one replacement, Schedule A4. Right now, I'd like to open our first public participation up to 30 minutes in length, three minutes per person. The first one is a one that was emailed in from Danielle Jocet Sloninski. "To the members of Board of Education, I am writing this email to support the Three Village Swim Club's request to regain access to the pool at Ward Melville High School. Over the past year, the swim club has used protocols developed by the USA Swimming to successfully safely hold practices, both at Stony Brook University and the Stony Brook School. In addition, our other school districts such as Hop Dog and Half Hollow Hills West have opened up their pools to the swim clubs in their area. As the Three Village School District begins to open up its athletics to higher sports, the members of the swim club feel that allowing our swimmers access to the pool can be done safely and would reaffirm the partnership between Three Village Swim Club and Three Village Central School District that it has existed for over 50 years. Thank you for considering this request." Okay, our next participant is Scott Maticu.
Hello, my name is Scott Maticu. My son is a senior at Ward Melville. He's also on the varsity football team. Is this, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
"I was asked to speak tonight. My first reaction was absolutely not. Then I started jotting down some notes and before I knew it, I couldn't stop writing. I apologize for reading this off paper, but I know I'll miss a lot if I ad lib. Can I ask you a question? Do you have children in sports or have had children in sports? Have they ever looked up at you in the stands because they missed a shot, fumbled the ball, struck out, and needed to make eye contact with you? Without words being spoken, they see the look in your eyes that says, 'It's okay.' A line I was always told, suck it up. Others, stay focused, you'll get them next time, shake it off, get your head back in the game. Some of these might seem a little harsh, but your child knows you and knows that look is encouragement. Our kids need us there because they know that whatever they do, we are there to support them. And when they get, when they hit that basket, catch that ball, get that hitter touchdown, made that block, they look in the stands again, and without words being spoken, they hear, 'Where to go? I'm so proud of you, do it again.' They need us there. They need to see their friends, family, boyfriend, girlfriend. To see and hear them cheering, that encouragement is a feeling that cannot be matched and is a feeling that every athlete needs and you cannot take that away from them. Too much has been taken away from them already this past year. For the seniors, this is supposed to be the best year of their lives. Put yourselves in their shoes. Close your eyes and think about it for a second. How do you feel? This past year has been terrible. Multiply the restrictions by the burden that these kids have already on their shoulders. Place on them by society, but mostly place on them by themselves. Sports is a place where a few hours a day, they can forget about these burdens, forget everything, and just concentrate on that one task. Oops, I'm sorry. Masks. Concentrate on that one task at hand and have fun. And on game day, get that encouragement from all their friends and family in the stands that they so well need and deserve. I have heard that this decision isn't made at the board level, but I urge you, if you care for our children as you say you do, you will reach out to Suffolk County Executive Steve Balone and Section 11 Executive Director Tom Combs and change your minds to allow spectators. Thank you."
You didn't want to speak, but you got fireworks.
Thank you.
Adam, I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you came up because your, you know, your words were very moving, so thank you for sharing them.
Thank you.
I would like to echo our thanks. I do want to say, and I thank you for recognizing that this was not a local decision, but one made by Section 11. And I am aware that Section 8, which is now Suffolk County, has made a decision to have two spectators per family. Our district recognizes and supports spectators. We love when our parents are able and others and our, and the students' peers are able to see them play. That is a very inspiring to an athlete, to be able to perform in front of people who care about them and are cheering for them and are there in a supportive manner. So I know that Section 11 has surveyed, is in the process or has begun a survey of districts asking about their interest in having spectators. Our district is in favor and Mr. Finerty has registered our favor of having spectators in the district, and we are very hopeful that that decision will take place. So you do have the support of the Three Village School District to have spectators. We would love to see that happen. We know how important it is for you and for your athlete. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next participant is Bonnie Reeb.
Well, if it's gonna happen, maybe I don't need to speak.
No, thank you. Thanks, Scott. Nice job.
Thanks for listening. My name is Bonnie Reber and I'm a mom of a senior who plays on the high school football team. He's played football his entire life. I'm here not to speak only as a parent, but also as a police supervisor of the PAL, the Police Athletic League. One of my jobs is to supervise the activities of them, and this year was very challenging, but it was not insurmountable. This fall, I was fortunate enough to have supervised an elite flag football league. It was made up of 16 high school football teams around Suffolk County. Games were played on a normal 100-yard football field. Teams were 25 players, four teams played at the same time. There were six games a night and parents were allowed to watch. It was run by two PAL officers and they were able to take temperatures, enforce the mask policy, and maintain social distancing among everybody. No one gave anyone a hard time about wearing a mask. Spectators remained distant from each other, brought lawn chairs, sat in the bleachers, but they were about one-fourth capacity. No reported COVID case was traced back to the parents or the kids at any of these games. And trust me, I would have heard about it and the news would have heard about it if it was because it was here in Suffolk County. The kids were grateful to play, the parents were grateful to watch. I'm just here to say it can be done. If there are two teams playing, there are about 50 players, each player has one or two parents, about 200 people spread out around a 100-yard football field, it's definitely doable. PAL also ran a combine in the fall and they ran outdoor running events. We could, just a thought, we could have each child be issued two passes to ensure no more than two parents or relatives that attend. Volunteers can ensure the temperatures, waivers, passes are ensured to be taken. And I'm just here to let you know that that's the kind of thing PAL did. It's doable. If, you know, any assistance, I could let you know how it was run. Thank you.
I also want to state that we're continuing to stream athletic events, both home and away, and we recognize that there are parents who would not be able to attend even if spectators were allowed, and we will continue to do that as well.
Joshua Miller.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. I'm, I wear a couple of hats in the community, but among them, I'm a Ward Melville grad. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank some of you for not failing me out of Jolinas years ago. I'm a physician in the community, but tonight I'm a swim dad. And you read an email a short while ago from one of our parents requesting that you reopen the Ward Melville High School pool to the Three Village Swim Club. You will hear from other parents tonight about the protocols and procedures that the swim club has in place. You'll also hear quite a bit about the over 50-year-long relationship the swim club has with the school district. The investment that the swim club has made to Ward Melville's swim team and infrastructure and the relationship that we've shared together has really been ironclad. My perspective that I hope to offer to the board as you consider reopening the pool to the club and to the community is, as a physician, the protocols that the team has put in place are established based on framework from USA Swim, from Metro Swim, which are the governing bodies that our sport adheres to in our region. They adhere to national standards with regards to COVID-19 and the pandemic. They've been vetted by the town of Brookhaven as we've used their facilities, as well as SUNY Stony Brook and SUNY in Albany, because we're using the university pool as well. I can impress upon you the positive impact that athletics have on our kids during unprecedented misery over the last year. And I'll close simply by saying that my kids haven't been in a restaurant in 11 months. They have gone to school. And many thanks to all of you for what you've done to keep our schools open. Really, really amazing work. But my 10-year-old goes to school and he goes to the pool and he comes home, and that's his existence. And to be able to get our kids back into their home pool would be absolutely amazing. And our club is representative of about 60%, 70% Three Village School District residents, and the rest are representative of district residents from our neighboring areas. And they all adhere to the same safety protocols and procedures that have been vetted time and time again. It's a safe sport and we are good citizens of the school, and I would love to see the board make a decision to allow us back in to use the facilities at this time. Thank you. Randy can correct me, but I think we're about 60% or so Three Village District residents and the rest of surrounding areas. And the other point that I think is important to mention is that other community swim clubs have been allowed in other district pools in the area. Hop Dog, for instance, is one, and there are others. Thank you for the time.
Yes. Christina Retslaff.
Good evening. My name is Christina Retslaff and I'm an alumni of Ward Melville from the class of 1993. My husband and I have resided in the district since 2007, have three children, and I am here on behalf of the Three Village Swim Club advocating for the club to the return to our home pool, which is Ward Melville. Other districts such as Half Hollow Hills, Connect Quat, and Hop Dog have already welcomed back swim clubs to their pool using similar protocols that our club has provided to Three Village. I am also an employee of the Half Hollow Hills School District, and I firsthandly welcomed back my students this September. In October, the Board of Education at Half Hollow approved the usage of the natorium at High School West to Team Suffolk Swim Club. Team Suffolk has approximately 200 members. They too are comprised of Half Hollow Hills residents as well as surrounding districts. Team Suffolk is using similar protocols, but utilizing six swimmers per lane, where we are proposing a four, five swimmer per lane, and our team is approximately at 150 swimmers. Connect Quat Swim Club was initially swimming at Brentwood High School until October, when the district permitted the team to use the Connect Quat High School pool. The Connect Quat Swim Club has approximately 100 members that reside within and outside the district. They are using similar protocols as we have proposed. Lastly, Hop Dog School District was a pioneer and permitted the Hop Dog Swim Club to access to their pool in July. This club has approximately 125 members, and again, from within and outside the district, also using similar protocols as we have proposed. Swimming is considered a low-risk sport, and we hope that we can work with you and the Board of Education and our team to get our swimmers back at Ward Melville. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize if I butchered this last name. Randy Dimaculangan.
Good. So, as you said, my name is Randy Dimaculangan. I am a resident in Stony Brook. I have two daughters, one at Ward Melville and one at Jolinas. I know I have 30, three minutes, but I do want to take the time to thank Cheryl Pedicich, the board, all the faculty and all the teachers for an outstanding job on day-to-day operations. I believe in the most challenging of times that you do represent literally the gold standard of all school districts, and I appreciate that we went to five days from the day one. So, thank you for that. I am also a board member of the Three Village Swim Club, and I have been up here now to request for access to the Ward Melville pool. Since the summer, I have spoken with Cheryl Pedicich, Jeff Carlson, and with our AD, Kevin Finerty. I have preached to the members patience as we waited for the school opening. I continued to preach patience throughout the year until January. And when the boys varsity team welcomed other schools to our pool, I felt the time is now to ask for our turn to go to the Ward Melville pool and swim. As Dr. Miller has mentioned, as Christina Retslaff and Dr. Sloninski via email had mentioned, I don't want to repeat those points, but for me, Three Village is comprised 60% of Ward Melville students and younger students of the district. But we wouldn't want to ignore the 40% that are by the nearby community. We have a pool, many don't. There's independent swim that they don't have access to. My older daughter actually no longer swims because she could not bear the 60-minute commute to the town of Brookhaven in the middle of November. She is still a cross-country and track member, but she is no longer swimming. And it's that level of dedication from the other swimmers that I want to convey to you. The effort that they go through in 40-degree weather to be in the pool, to have suits to go into the beaches, Cedar Beach since April, these are people who only do what they want, which is to swim. They are in safety sport, so I request for you to reconsider their entrance to the Ward Melville pool. And if not today, I'd be happy to speak again at the next board meeting. Thank you.
First, thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it. It definitely has been a team effort to have all of our students back in school, and I appreciate that comment. The, we have thought a great deal about the Three Village Swim Club, and we respect the protocols that have been put into place. And we do recognize that it is a low-risk sport. As you know, the district started off with, we weren't going to have any outside groups within our facilities. In fact, at this point, parents really aren't in the building during the day. We don't allow that at this particular time. Things may, are changing. We are seeing a decline in the number of COVID cases. You probably have seen my correspondence. Those are definitely going down. That's a positive sign, fortunately. Long Island, as you know, still has the highest positivity rate. We do recognize that. We take great pains in our district to safeguard our students and staff. That is our critical mission right now, other than educating our students and providing them with enriching opportunities. We, as, I've spoken with the board, spoken with Mr. Finerty, and as a first step, and again, we, here in Three Village, sometimes we like to do things gradually because we believe that taking step by step is sometimes the best way than to jump in full, excuse the pun, all at once. So, one of the things that we'd like to start is we'd like to start by offering the Three Village Swim Club, Three Village residents, the opportunity to use our pool. We would like to reassess that in a month and then perhaps have other residents coming in. We very carefully watch and monitor our students. And again, I understand that you have protocols in place, but a district under the SED has and DOH and CDC has certain other guidelines that we must follow, and we must report information to the school report card. Private organizations do not have those same responsibilities that we have. And therefore, safeguarding our own students and our own residents has to be the number one priority of our school district. It has to be. So I would like to recommend to the board that we start with our own residents in the Three Village Swim Club, evaluate this after a month, and if things are going very well and the numbers continue to decline, which I hope they are, more people getting vaccinated, which is great, and I know if students are not, but we do look forward to community immunity at some point, that we would reevaluate that, and we would not be saying no to, we understand that you're a club, which is inclusive, and we're not trying to be exclusionary, exclusionary, excuse me, it's hard to speak with these masks on. But I do feel that it has to be a step-by-step process for us because we want to do the right thing first and foremost by our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the minutes for January 13, 2021. Can I please have a motion? Mr. Connors, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Foes, abstentions, motion passes. Moving on to reports, student representative report, Jesse Behar.
You know how I sometimes start with a more somber note? Well, keeping with that, here it comes. First, I'm going to reiterate. Yeah, no, sorry. First, I'm going to reiterate what I say monthly. School in person was a huge win. We are grateful. Before we get to the end of the school year and before it's too late to do anything, I feel it is important to give a temperature check on the class of 2021. We walked into this year masked and aware in theory of what might, of what might not be. Being aware doesn't make it better. To date, lost milestones include pep rally, homecoming, senior day, senior trips, senior awards, and senior awards and fashion show. These rites of passages are gone. Unlike years past, we will not be celebrated or celebrating the above. What's on the minds of the majority of seniors right now is, will there be a prom or not? Or any modified in-person events? I stress in-person. I feel positive you will make graduation happen because last year, while many districts threw their hands up, you guys made the graduation happen. Many 2021 seniors have given up hopes of having any significant events, and that in itself is sad. I know Mr. Bernard mentioned at the PTSA meeting that things are still to be determined. I'm just making sure I voice the senior concerns to everyone while that determination is up in the air. Please also remember sixth and ninth grade classes, too. We have a lot of fields here and they can come in handy, just saying. Speaking of fields, this is where I go to the positive news. All sports are back now, which is awesome. There is a lot of energy in the school. Thank you for publicly supporting us. We are hearing Section 11 is proposing to not let parents spectate, and we ask that you please fight for at least limited outdoor attendance. Literally every other state and many other sections in New York have figured this out. Some positive wishes for the snow to melt from our fields right now would be great. Just so everyone is aware, while most of us don't want to shovel our own driveways, several athletes have offered to shovel the fields. We know you need some kind of equipment, but we offered, and hey, we're, we're just looking out for the budget. With the talk of the snow, we want to thank you for letting us have snow days. That was cool. But seriously, we need the whole community to start wishing the white snow melts off the fields. Repeating some thank yous from last month, which includes the PTSA for being creative to try to fund scholarships for seniors. Another shout-out for that mom's group that did the Luminaire bags with all the seniors' names in December and in January, decorated the fences by the tennis courts. That was awesome. Seeing Ward Melville 2021 Cups let us know that we are not forgotten. That felt good. Please find a way to continue these things. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, we could do that. I second that. So, and, and, and thanks for the offer about the fields. Yeah, we'll definitely think about that. So, Jesse, I do want to respond to the issue about the prom and graduation. We know that those are significant milestones for our seniors and also our ninth graders moving up as well as our sixth graders. We are not giving up hope. I'm telling you right now, I feel strongly about it, we all do. And the fact that the governor has looked at March 1 and allowing weddings of 150 to take place is a good sign, it's a positive sign. And we are looking at options that will make this special, as special as it can be for our seniors in particular. So, we, we're optimistic, I'm going to continue to be optimistic.
Thank you, Jesse. Items for board discussion for preliminary budget for 2021-22. Mr. Carlson.
Thank you. Going back a little bit to the current year's budget, we have spent so far about $6.5 million on COVID-related expenses. Most of that, more than $4 million of that is additional instructional staff. And what that additional instructional staff has allowed us to do is create more spaces, lower class size, which has created more room within the classrooms. So we've been able to maintain six feet between all of our students. That, in addition to the desk barriers, the masks, the cleaning and all of that, it's, that, that is what has enabled us, well, plus doing Mason work in 23 and a half hours a day, has enabled us to have all of our kids, or at least those who want to come to school, in school five days a week. And if you don't know it, we are one of the very few districts anywhere that has been doing that since September K through 12. It costs a lot of money. But the message that we had gotten going back to last summer was, do what you need to do to get our kids back in school and do it safely. And we've done that. So, what that distancing in the classrooms has done for us is even when somebody does test positive within the classroom, the whole class isn't out. And that's been a difference between us and a lot of other districts as well. In a lot of other districts, they're using the barriers, but not the six feet. So what that means is one student or teacher in the class tests positive, the whole class has to quarantine for two weeks. We haven't had to do that. But, but again, because of, we've been able to keep smaller class size by using additional space and hiring all the additional instructional staff. So what does that mean? Well, how do we pay for that? Well, some of it, we knew going into the year, we, in doing the budget for this year back last spring, not knowing what the year was going to bring, we put in as much as we could into the budget, knowing this was coming. Of course, we're in a tax cap, so we weren't able to, you know, it wasn't the sky's the limit. But special legislation was passed earlier this school year by the governor that said that schools could use their reserves to pay for COVID-related expenses in order to keep schools open. That was fine to do, however, we have to pay that money back over five years to our reserves. So what does that mean going forward? Well, going to next year now, we don't know what September's going to bring. We can't just assume everything will be back to normal. We don't want to have schools, kids in school five days a week this year and then come September and say, well, we can't do that again. That would not be acceptable. So we have to be prepared in September to have schools open every day, just like we have this year. So in next year's budget, we have to account for whatever additional staff we're going to need. We need to start paying back the reserves because that was part of the special legislation, that the money that we took out of reserves, we have to start paying back over no more than five years. And if you saw the article in the paper the other day about state aid, you see we're not getting any more state aid next year. And as far as the tax cap goes, as those of you who have been coming to meetings for the last nine years, that what's referred to as a 2% tax cap is not necessarily 2%, and it varies year to year and district to district. For this coming up year, our cap is 1.37%. So, between all our additional costs that we normally would have, retirement system increases, health insurance, just cost of living increases, no more state aid, in fact, probably a little less state aid, all these COVID-related expenses that we'll still have and be, have to be prepared for with next year, and we have to start paying back our reserves, it would be impossible to put a budget together that stays within that cap and, and take care of all of it. So, we are going to be putting a budget together that will exceed the tax cap, right? Our plan is that the amount that we're going to go above the cap by is what we need to start paying our reserves back. It's about $800,000 a year is what we have to pay back to reserves. So that, the amount translates to 0.48% on the tax levy. So add that to the cap of 1.37%, and it would mean our budget next year would carry a tax increase of 1.85%. So, still below 2%, but it is above the cap. So that would mean, the only way it passes is if at least 60% of the people who vote, vote yes for the budget. So that is the budget that we will be putting together. And, but we just wanted to, you know, let you know that the reason for it was to keep our kids in school five days kids in school five days a week. This year, and we have to, we still have to now pay for that going forward to next year because there was no way to include that in this year's budget. And we want to continue that for next year, not knowing what next year will bring. And as I said, we are one of the very few districts that's been able to do that, and we want to keep doing that. So. Does anybody have any questions at this time? I mean, this is just preliminary, you know, to let you know what's coming.
Any questions or comments? No? Thank you. Items for board action. C, approval of memorandum of agreement between Suffolk County and Three Village Central School District for provisions of COVID-19 testing at local schools. And that's for the sports, right?
This one is just for general testing, should we enter into any one of the microclusters that we would have permission to test the community. I'm sure you may recall, probably a couple of months ago, you received a survey asking if you would be willing. So, we are not there. I just want to make that abundantly clear. It's just as a precaution that we have this in place.
Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Connors, Dr. Kerman, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. Item D, approval of memorandum of agreement between Suffolk County and Three Village Central School District for provisions of COVID-19 testing for local schools at higher-risk sports.
Right. We began this last week. It's been very successful. I want to give kudos to Kevin Finerty, to Don Mason, and to our security staff, Jack Blum, and our nurses who have been doing an outstanding job, and to the families and to the athletes. Everybody has been very cooperative. As you may be aware, Suffolk County DOH and the governor, as well as Steve Blown, is requiring that all higher-risk athletes be tested. And right now, that is for basketball, for wrestling, and for cheerleading. And we've been complying, and things have been going along very nicely, so.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Ms. Gish, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. Revision E, revision of the 2021 appointment of impartial hearing officers.
This is just the removal of one person from our list and additions to our list for hearing officers.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Cornrich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. And F, bid extension renewal?
This extension is for a company that provides service to our heating and ventilation control systems.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Mr. Viso, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. G, approval of contract with outside service provider for special education services?
This is an outside provider that would provide services in accordance with students' IEPs.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Mr. Cornrich, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. H, approval of health and welfare service contract?
This is for Three Village resident students that attend a private school located within the Middle Country School District.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Mr. Connors, Ms. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. I, acceptance of donations.
We have one donation. It's a check in the amount of $150 donated by a Ward Melville High School student, Alex Fraser, to purchase a friendship bench for the high school.
Hey, Dr. Kerman, Mrs. Bevelinka, all in favor? Oppose. Abstentions? Motion passes.
What is a friendship bench?
Like a buddy bench?
It could be a buddy bench. Then it could also be a buddy bench.
It's a bench.
J, declaration of surplus equipment?
We have various equipment, two kilns from our art department and a lot of equipment from our PPS department as well.
Okay. Dr. Kerman, Ms. Bevelinka, all in favor? Oppose. Most passes. K, approval of memorandum of agreement between the Three Village Central School District and the TVTA, Three Village Teachers Association, an employee named in attached Schedule A.
So, this MOA is as a result of us losing one of our COVID employees mid-year and having to rehire someone to take that person's place.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Gish, Mr. Cornrich, all in favor? Abstentions? Motion passes. L, personal action, Education Law 913, examination of employee named in the attached Schedule B.
And this MOA is as a result of a reevaluation for one of our employees as identified on confidence of Schedule B.
Okay. Mrs. Bevelinka, Dr. Kerman, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. M, approval of memorandum of agreement between Three Village Central School District and the Three Village Teachers Association regarding teacher assistance and teacher substitute coverage.
And because we're in a, because we're in a time where we're continuing to need subs, this MOA helps us address that by compensating, rewriting an MOA to help compensate our certified and non-certified teaching assistants to substitute.
Thank you. Dr. Kerman, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? None? Motion passes. N, personnel matters, one instructional, Schedule A4. Can I have a motion? Mr. Cornrich, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? None? Motion passes. N, personnel matters, number two, non-instructional. Mr. Viso? Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. O, recommendation of committee of special education for the date stated. Mr. Viso, Mrs. Gish, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. M, P, recommendation of committee on preschool special education meetings for the date stated. Mrs. Gish, Mr. Viso, all in favor? Opposed abstentions? None? Motion passes. Any other informational items of interest? Seeing none. We'll move on to our second part of public participation up to 30 minutes in length. Does any, would anybody like to speak? Mrs. Jacobino?
I guess, you know, I come every month just to watch everything, but this month, I think, I feel I want to just say a little something. Looking around the room, I know most of the parents here, I know they're all senior parents, at least, I don't know if that's when, but all senior parents here with football. Yeah, and I just wanted to say a little bit about what Jesse said. I know how hard it is to keep the school going. We are all so grateful that we're in school every day. I know that there's things that we're not privy to that happen every day that prevent, I guess, more of the fun things for happening for the kids in the school, especially the seniors. But what Jesse mentioned, a bunch of things that have missed already, and I just would feel remiss if I didn't actually point out the fact that all of these seniors, the kids that are seniors, they've missed the chance to do, to be the lead football player, to be the quarterback, which Jesse would have been, to go to Allstate for music, like I'm sure Jesse would have done. Amongst, I could use Jesse pretty much for every single thing that I'm talking about here. I don't need to use my own kid. But these are all things that he's taken it with a smile, and he's being a really good sport about it. But I would say with my own son, as you know, he's a baseball player. So, through baseball, luckily we played in the summer, he actually got to play baseball in winter workouts through October, and then it stopped. And then, I have to say, it was nothing. I know in the beginning of the year, we had a lot of trouble with kids getting together too much outside of school, and that was raising our rates of COVID. We're going to hit spring, and I think if we can't do more to engage them in some school function events for their entertainment, maybe some, I don't know, there's a lot of ideas going around with the parents, senior sunrise, senior sunset, maybe movie night, something, where they would be safely monitored at school, social distancing and masks. I think what happens with the kids that are on hybrid in a lot of the schools is the rates are high because when they're not in school, they're not abiding by the rules. Now, we've had some ideas about maybe, you know, gathering the kids ourselves, but then we would not be able to enforce those rules. So, just as an idea, maybe we could do a few more things, not hold our breath and hope for prom and graduation. Seniors have missed a lot, aside from prom and graduation. The kids in the art programs have missed, the kids in the music programs have missed, the athletes obviously have missed, and they're never getting it back. It's affected their college choices, it's affected college opportunities, and they know it, and they're sad. A lot of them got jobs, a lot of them have given up. But I know for my son, once he started doing winter workouts again, and hockey just got to be started this week, he is much happier that he has something to do. My son, Luke, has never not had anything to do. From October to now, he's had nothing to do, you know? And it really does affect their mood, and there is a lot to be said for their emotional well-being of them. The clubs are all virtual, so sometimes they go on at home and sometimes they don't. Maybe as the rates go down and things are getting better, as a school, because that isn't our, that isn't our control, we can think about doing things to make them have a little bit more entertainment or things to make them feel bonded at school. They won't be doing it at home if they're doing it at school.
Excuse me.
Just, you know, something to say. That's it? I'm done? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else would like to speak?
You knew I had to say something before I left. Hello, everyone. Nice to see you. I'll be brief. Jesse wasn't kidding. We can get, how many football players to clean off that field, Jesse? That's right. It's really depressing. I, myself, rearranged two college visits because they were going to finally get to work out as a team on the field. I know we can't control Mother Nature, but we can get the boys. They're motivated. They have nothing. You know this. I'm preaching to the choir. Let the boys shovel. They need to work out anyway. I know we have insurance to worry about and liability and all that stuff. Whatever we got to do, if we could somehow salvage something from the break next week so that the soccer team can get out there and the lacrosse team and our boys. And please be firm with Section 11 because Tom Combs is useless. That's all. Thank you very much. You know where to find me. I'll go shovel myself. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Angelique. Would anybody else like to speak?
I just want to say that hopefully the predictions aren't right, but we're expecting more snow next week. Just let's all hold our breath and hope that that doesn't happen. Would be really nice, right?
And one to three inches tonight.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Okay. Mr. Connors, Dr. Kerman, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Bye.